We are now on item five, lead number, letter C, presentation by the simple recycling program.
Thank you, Councilman. Thanks for having me. My name is Scott Stevenson. I'm with Simple Recycling. I'm here to talk about this program that we've been doing years back. This program was the highest environmental all of the Senate municipality can implement. It's completely free to the residents, your operational cost to the city. According to the EPA, eighty-five percent of textiles still end up in the landfill. What people don't realize is ninety-five percent of that material is recyclable or reusable. Even though there are several different outlets, such as Goodwill, Salvation Army, donation things, et cetera, the numbers don't lie. This material still ends up in the landfill. You probably wonder what we do once we collect this material. Simply, we mimic the current recycling schedule, so if you have, let's say, WCA or some division that comes on Fridays, we're going to be doing things scattered by hours in area. We will provide the plastic bags, logo, et cetera, to each resident to make the process user-friendly, but I'll get to the marketing part here in a minute. Once we collect the material, we take it to our thrift store partners where we grade it and sort it, just in with the suitable for resale at that time, which is about ten to twenty percent of the material. The remaining fifty to sixty percent of the material is sent for international export. We send it to coat to Eastern Europe rather than Africa due to quality and best use because of climate. The remaining twenty or so percent of the material is broken down into raw materials, such as carpet padding, insulation, organic crags, et cetera. Therefore, leaving about five percent that ends up in the landfill is simply a mechanical act that's no longer has any use for. Now textiles account for five to nine percent of your total household waste stream. So the diversion rate to the landfill, that is about two to five percent of that material. We're able to launch this program in a four-phase marketing program. And I think we provided some packets. In your packet, the first phase is going to be a postcard sent out similar to this to each resident, explains the program, and we'll have a launch date on there when the program will start. Phase two will be about one week before the kickoff of the program, we're going to send another postcard. This looks just like this, but have the city's logo, et cetera, information about the program. It'll be actually the bags string wrapped in the postcard to each resident. Now, the third phase will be shortly after the launch of the program. We're either going to send a third postcard reminder, or it's going to be some kind of social media blast or email blast to residents within Magnolia City Code. And then later on down the line, we're going to send a reminder out to each resident about six or eight months down the line. We're able to launch this program, it breaks down to two dollars and two hundred and fifty cents a household, but being correct of the cost. In addition, we will compensate the city twenty dollars a time for the material collected, which is about a pound. We will send a check after the fifteenth of each month with a number of pounds collected and the amount of money per pound. Alls we ask is you to promote the program on your website, newsletters, et cetera. Now, we do ask for an agreement with this program, which you can cancel for cause with a sixty-day notice with a chance for us to rectify the problem. Since we have invested X amount of dollars in your community to get the program started. Furthermore, we do commit to two events a year to the city, whether it's Earth Day, Recycle Day, et cetera. Now, in fifty-five sub-municipals and four states that we're in, we've had zero cancellations and nor did we chance to cancel on our end either. So in closing, the three main benefits, it's free to the city and its residents, it helps your diversion rate at the landfill and tipping fees, and lastly, we compensate the city for the program. It's all open for questions.
You're saying it's every Friday, every cycle?
Yeah.
We can't hear you back here.
I was just asking if it was every Friday when we have recycle, they would do that. And how does, how do y'all help locally, like the local donation centers or?
Currently, in other communities and municipals that we're working with, we actually, whatever they can't get rid of, we will actually buy it from them.
So you would work with the local donation?
Have you been in contact with the local SOS or any company?
Uh, Tana has.
Your counter or her counter?
Yes, Tana.
Okay.
Yes, she didn't even talk to them.
How often do you guys go by and find out if they can't sell anything?
That's something that we work out with them, whether it be if you have it bulk or be monthly, weekly, however they are offloading it now and how much they're getting rid of, maybe case-by-case basis, I guess.
So they could do the same thing at their location with the bags? If it's items that they can't sell or they're overflowing, they can put those bags out as well? Or y'all just go and make a special?
It's just for residential only.
Oh, residential?
Mm-hmm.
And it's only clothing?
It's small home goods as well. Pots, parents, flatware, irons.
Other laws?
You're not the first person to say that.
So in other small communities, how have you worked with, like SOS, for example? They've been the community for a very long time, you know, providing service and creating revenue to put back into the community. Now, it seemed like it would be a conflict of interest, so how's that addressed?
It's, we just started that here locally in the eastern market. On the east coast, we've been doing it for a little while, because that's where our corporate office is. So we have one of the bigger charities in Ohio. It's a small charity that we've been doing with. And basically, what we're doing with them is buying their, what's called rack offs, which is the one shoe they can't get rid of, or the tattered clothes, or the sleeping bag, or the pillows, the pillowcases, anybody has them. We have outlets to get rid of that material.
So what do you do with it?
We will ship it overseas for international export, to where they will break it down into raw materials.
And so a program like yours, because it is so convenient, take away from the things that we would usually donate to SOS?
Not necessarily. Basically, we designed this program to target the resident who normally doesn't donate. The resident who does donate, for the material they believe in or for the tax write-up, they're going to continue to do so because they believe in that message and that mission. We just simply give the resident who doesn't donate, or doesn't have a home phone, to get that phone call, another option. Actually, you know, the phone calls you get from Purple Heart, that's actually us making those phone calls on behalf of Purple Heart. We've had to install the structure in place for thirty-four years.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Adam Seitz, consideration, to you. Follow what? Consideration of possible action to give proposed tax rate, seize the rollback rate or the effective rate, determine if well or ineffective record vote, place proposed tax rate increase on future agenda and set the first public hearing for August twenty-second, twenty-seventeen, seven PM, and second is August twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen, seven PM. And the effective tax rate is point four seven zero nine per one hundred, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to take a record vote. Matt Banter. We have a motion? Okay, we have first by man.
Say it. Are we seeking the motion for a specific tax rate?
Goodbye, y'all, please. Can't hear you. Come on up front.
Everybody come up front now.
I guess, is this staff seeking a motion for the effective rate or a specific tax rate? Tax rate?
Effective rate.
Okay, I understand that, but if it's not the effective rate, they want a specific?
And they would give us a specific?
Councilman Banter, if you would make your motion specific, if you want the effective rate or a different rate.
Okay, so the motion would be to take the effective rate of four point seven zero nine.
Wait. Wait, what's the effective rate? Point or point four?
Point four.
Point four seven zero?
That would make a difference. So the motion, the motion of point four seven zero nine.
And we have a first by man, second by women. All right, we have a record vote. Matt Banter. All right, John Brownland?
I approve.
Brenda Hobbie?
Prove.
Johnny Williams?
Sure.
Any more discussion? Motion carries effective tax rate of point four seven zero nine. All right, Adam Seitz, citizens' comments, request for petition from the public. All right, let me remind everybody, this is a three-minute, one-sided conversation. There's no two-way dialogue, so we can't comment on anything, so you have three minutes to voice your opinion, all right? Connie Stegan.
I cede my time to the next.
Say again.
I would like to cede my time to Vicki Sears.
And you are?
Vicki Sears.
So who's speaking now?
Vicki Sears.
Vicki, and Connie is not?
Correct.
She's going to give me her minutes. You can't go back.
Oh, yeah, I have three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll just have to talk really fast. My name is Vicki Sears. I live at one eight oh two-three Stubby Lane in Magnolia, Texas. And I am spokesperson for the Deer Crossing Homeowners Association, also board member for the HOA. Our topic is the speed hump on Stubby Lane that disappeared. First, we want to say thank you for the efforts that you all have gone through into making Stubby Lane a safe street for our children. You put up the stop sign on rolling hills, you repositioned the light, the street light, and you posted speed limits signs. With these improvements, it's evident that you have the safety and the well-being that Magnolia citizens have had, and we really appreciate it. We know you work hard. We want to know that we've appreciated that. On Friday, July the seventh, a few weeks after the speed hump had been installed on Stubby Lane, it was mysteriously removed without notice or reason. Our HOA notified the city police, who came out filed a theft report. And it wasn't until Monday that we learned that a work order had indeed been issued to remove it. This action now involved the mayor, the city administrator, city secretary, chief of police, a police officer, city council members, city work crews, the board of directors, Deer Crossing Homeowners Association, homeowners both in the subdivision and on Stubby Lane, and an untold number of other people. We believe the action to remove the speed hump was unwarranted because we approved before the new speed hump ordinance was adopted, and we feel that we should be grandfathered, as are all the other speed humps in the city. According to the minutes of March eighth, two thousand sixteen, city council meeting, item number thirteen, partly states about a motion to accept petition from Deer Crossing HOA for speed humps, council members voted and the motion carried unanimously. Likewise, item fourteen, the same petition from Windmill Estates. As far as I know, the petition and other paperwork submitted was exactly the same for both subdivisions since our HOAs often work together on community improvement projects. Later in the meeting, item seventeen adopted an ordinance establishing the process by which the HOA may request speed humps. No ordinance was in place at the time that our request was approved. Therefore, we feel like it should be grandfathered. Since the removal of the speed hump and in the process of trying to determine why it had been removed, a request to meet with the mayor proved fruitless, but meetings with other city councils had taken place. On July the thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, Connie Stegan, HOA board member, met with Paul Mindy's, city administrator, and Lynn George, city secretary. She resubmitted copies of the paperwork that had been presented before the city meeting of March two thousand sixteen. We were told that we'd be on the agenda for this meeting and that our original paperwork would be reviewed. It was only due to an inquiry on our part that we learned Friday that we were not on this agenda. We know? Yes. We just hope that you will consider the safety and concern of our children in our neighborhood and reinstate our speed bump.
Thank you. Connie, would you like to?
Where did you leave your time? Did you leave off a lot?
Yes.
All right, I'll finish it. Y'all are going to be like this. I don't know why we were told that people could cede their time and that that's been done in the past. Where were you? All right, I think we've pretty much, we're just going to reiterate.
Shirley Johnson, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Proton, and some councilwoman and women for letting me speak tonight on behalf of SOS. I did meet with Tom Ross last week and learned of the proposal that his own agenda tonight that he discussed. Tom explained that the project thoroughly and, and I so appreciate the time she took to share this information with us. The clothing recycle project is a good idea to give the residents in Magnolia a simple method to donate their unwanted items. However, I'd just like to, maybe for those who don't know who SOS is, we are a thirty-one-year-old nonprofit in the city. And our mission is to communicate the gospel as we model the love and compassion of Jesus Christ by providing food, clothing, emergency financial assistance, and other necessities to our neighbors in need in the greater Magnolia area. So we'd like to share that we believe this project will impact our current charity work involving these very same donations. Clothing, coats, jackets, belts, shoes, purses, jewelry, linens, blankets, home decor, housewares, furniture, and seasonal items are donated in two locations within the city limits. One is the resale shop here in the Arlen Shopping Center on fourteen eighty-eight, and the others are Giving Center on Little twig Lane. Any bag that comes in has all of these items that were discussed earlier that I just mentioned. So at the resale shop, this is what happens. They come in the back door of the resale shop. The residents here are in close proximity and do drop off their donations on a regular basis. The best items are then priced and placed on the floor to sell. The seconds, if you will, are taken to the Giving Center on Little twig. All old, stained, torn, worn-out clothing and linens are sent to Little twig. We put it in a trailer and picked up by a recycling nonprofit called Our Community Giving. We sell these items at very low prices to assist our community in having quality clothing, household items at a much reduced price. Almost all of your wives shop very regularly at the resale shop, I need to say. Just had that happen. Last year, the proceeds of the store at the resale shop were thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars after expenses. These funds were used to buy food at the Food Pantry on Friendship Drive from the Montgomery County Food Bank. Now, at the Giving Center on Little twig, these donations are received at the Giving Center and given out freely every Saturday for our clients who have qualified for a voucher for household items. Just last Saturday, we had two families who had lost everything in the fires by Crown Ranch. So I'm sorry. If they don't have a voucher, they can still get the clothing. But I do want to address recycling specifically. We already recycle everything that I mentioned that's not sellable. As my director at Little twig says, Shirley, this isn't a third world country. People in Magnolia like nice things, so a lot of things are recycled. However, we sell them for ten cents a pound to Our Community Giving, which is a local company in Houston that uses the very same rags company in downtown Houston, but then the rest are made into thread and stuff.
All right, thank you, Shirley.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Hi, I'll make it real quick. My name is John Nix, and on the agenda, item number fourteen, first to do, nominating a board member for the appraisal district. I'd like y'all to nominate a friend of mine by the name of Eric Yalick. He is a conservative, well, he's conservative, will list y'all out by for the cities and be a great choice. He publishes The Golden Hammer online, I don't know if any of y'all read it. So I'd really would like for him to put y'all to endorse that. He wants to be on the appraisal district. And my second thing is, I would like to see the city pass an ordinance or a policy to revamp how the city handles public information requests. I know a city that's here in the Houston area that if I need to send a request, it's a thousand, over a thousand pages. The city secretary of that city emails me without a problem. If I even request three pages, I have to pay thirty cents here. So I'd really like to see a change. I know Magnolia ISD and the Houston Metro have a policy of every, give you a free, they're where they work for thirty-six hours, and then after that, they charge you. Maybe something like that, but I'd really like to see a change in the public information policy and of course, to, like I said before, nominate Eric Yalick for the appraisal board. Thanks so much and have a great night.
Thank you. All right, and are there anybody else that would like to speak that did not go out of form? Ann.
I'm just going to make a little mention regarding the recycling. I served many years on the board for SOS, I was both secretary and president for more than one term. I don't remember how many. I give to SOS regularly. In fact, there were several things when I was cleaning out the house that I don't know if they know, and one of my dear friends, Janet Raw, yeah, you're still there. She knows I come and shop in the resale shop. But I left some things at the door because I was afraid they were going to turn me away because I donated so many things. But some people are not going to do that. They're going to throw it in the trash. And I have to admit, a lot of things when I was cleaning out, I threw in the trash because I was in a crunch time. There are also at least two other assistance ministries in the area. SOS has been here probably the longest since nineteen eighty-six. But the people, just like the presenter said, the people who are going to donate are going to do that because they've got that within them. That's a part of their structure. The others are just going to toss it. And that would be one more way that we could help people. All you need to do is go over to Humble, where I used to go because one of my granddaughters was on tournament softball. And to drive past the landfill to get to the ball fields. All you have to do is go there, and even with the windows up, you could smell it. And it just adds, and it was mountains. You could not see over them at all. So just kind of think about that, because I don't think it will hurt SOS or his helpers or Saint Vincent de Paul. I think it will just give another source, or something won't wind up in the trash. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Parker. They say I have a forgettable face, maybe unforgettable face, or that I look like Chris Rock. Okay, well, my name's Greg Parker, and it's election time. Election season's coming up. I'm running for county commissioner precinct two. I know it may not be favorable around here, but I want to thank you for your hospitality nonetheless. I am a veteran. I'm a former county commissioner, two terms in Comel County. I've been a state commissioner. I'm a former city manager. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration, a master's in public administration, ABD for my PhD in public policy administration. I've authored two conservative books. The last one, just recently released, has Allen West, who has wrote the foreword, as well. I have a lot of things that I want to stand for. I don't have three minutes, or I stand for. I don't have more than three minutes. I have a lot to talk about. But what I wanted to do is to introduce myself to you, because I don't think you'll forget this face. I don't think you will. At least I made you laugh. I don't think you will. But I wanted to introduce myself. I'll be attending your meetings a lot more, and I want to, I wanted to shake your hands, I have some stuff I want to give to you, not to everybody, but to you so you can produce them at your leisure. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for a wonderful meeting. As a veteran myself, I actually teared up. I tell you, that was fantastic. It really was. But thanks again for allowing me to speak.
Right up. Yes, sir.
My name's Scott Rhodes. My wife and I own two businesses right outside of Magnolia. We own Little City Signing Railroad. We've had that business since nineteen ninety-two. I also have a RV stores place right beside it. We filed for a permit a couple of years ago to have a sign put up right next to David Zia's place, Magnolia. I got a permit, paid for my permit, got my permit, put the sign up, and I was told I'd take it down because it's off-premises. The city has a lot of off-premises signs at this time. And I don't really understand the principle of why the sign is just not right. It's not fair, apparently, because we've got friends on signs up that are, their company, they're large. They do help the community, and I do understand that. They're not even in the county. We've got their signs up, but you've got somebody to employ, twenty-five to thirty people within the county, that I can't put a sign up. I've told I can't put one up. I'd like to see that changed. There's several businesses in here that would like to see that changed. There are several businesses that are having problems with it. And I'd just like to say and stand on record that I'd like to see that changed where we can get some signs up to maybe help ourselves a little, maybe employ some more people. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Scott. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to number eight, consent agenda. This portion of the agenda consists of items considered to be taken and to be acted upon by one motion. There was a separate discussion we had. We have A through H. Does he might need any kind of discussion on the need for these items?
Make a motion to approve A through H.
We have a first?
Second.
And we have a second. Brenda, any more discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carriers? All right, department reports.
That was a heck of a conversation. I'm real proud, you know. I was once told heroes are ordinary people, Jews are ordinary things. Anyway. Our risk ends a little bit, not quite what they were. We've got a lot of people on vacation. Our citations are actually, our, on the backup, our violations are actually up. Our number citations and violations, so that's because you write multiple on it. We work up on quite a few things, down our accidents or crashes. Let's do a call on accidents. I'm old school. Our crashes. But our collar load is starting to pick up a little bit. Everybody's coming back to vacation. School's starting to, you know, ramp, ramp back up, so we're doing good. And just to give y'all a heads up, I think they probably will talk about the, well, no, that was, this is not what, the copper that?
It was right at the first, I think it was the first.
Yeah. Anyway, one of the lift stations got hit. Took a bunch of copper. We got gas. We got a truck. I mean, it was in like, what, three hours that we found out about? We got, yeah.
Two.
Two hours. So, and we will have another truck, so you can go to truck. So we're going to have there a truck complete. It's been really, it's been a good month. A lot of guys have been on vacation, burner vacation time, trying to keep down, keep the comp time down, so.
Did y'all hire a police officer?
Yes, ma'am, we did. Actually, we hired two. Because we actually had three openings. We had two. We fixed to have another one come open in this month. Robbie Mendoza is one of the Houston places, on thirty-first, he'd be gone. So we hired for that. And we're looking hard.
Is the vandalism down at the park?
Well, I have the, yes, it's down. I make three or four tours a day through that thing, and all the past guys have been. do it, I know they do it at night, because I come in here picking up late Chinese food, even in my truck, I go through the park and see the guys going around. So, it is down. It is down. Any questions?
I'm three.
Did everybody fall into the truck?
I'm sorry?
Did everybody fall into the truck?
You know, we, except for it, F-150 sitting in the back.
And is that, are y'all replacing the, telling about that?
Yes, and actually, Kyle's one of them working on that, and correctly if I'm wrong, but because we're getting a bigger size tax, we're getting down on two.
Because it's a larger?
Quotations.
A section for a gallon.
So we're working, we're trying to keep as much down as we can, and do what we can.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Favor.
Evening. This, this does pretty standard, I mean, it's, the new water line, we'll be, probably, we got one, one of the jobs to be going in, it'll be online, all the tests came back from the lab, good, so, and we have one of the, the old, actually, the old idea, you can cut off the plug, and once that's done, you can turn the, the new one on, I hope tomorrow, I hope, so. About the list station out there, I talked to the insurance guy today, he's supposed to meet with me on Friday, it looks like it's going to be about twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars to fix.